As it is, and then two years readdress this and then rewrite it if we have to.
Well, then, working on it, if you said for eighteen months, then we only have two years.
But you presented it like in December.
Mm-hmm.
And then right away, yeah, you'd send it out in December, and then right away, Rutland signed. So, everybody else was already out of luck at that point. Like, we didn't have a chance to review the actual contract then.
We went by the dates and times of their city council meeting. Rutland was the first day, and they went back to send it before we even got it to them. Or before they was even visited. We went to Livermore the following week, Mark and I and Dean, and then we just been picking as we could make a meeting.
Mm-hmm. You guys didn't sign it, did you?
No, we didn't sign. They didn't sign it. But we went up to their meeting and presented it to them.
And we had a date lined up with those, and then they called and said, "Do we really need to come up there?" And I go, "It's up to you. It's your call." And they said, "Just don't worry about it," so.
And I guess they have one or two options. They can either do it, or they can have their own coverage. I mean, I don't, we don't, we aren't trying to be mean, or.
But you're just saying there's no changes to your contract. That your contract is what it is.
We just, I just asked him, "What do we want to do?" And he recommended trying to leave it for the next two years, and then if we have to reword it, then we reword it.
Because I would, I would agree with John Davis, the county attorney, that since these four towns have already signed, I think we have to let it go into effect, and then terminate it, and then redo it all. Is that correct, John?
Well, you have to. We're not going to be in a situation where I get a call at one o'clock in the morning because some town is upset that the Sheriff's Department is not sending somebody out there to deal with something, and then we have to start interpreting different agreements, so.
Well, I think what Bruce was maybe trying to say is, this goes into effect, and yes, it goes to twenty eighteen. And what I heard John say earlier is, it's not going to be a good policy to have different contracts for everybody. One with five percent increase, one with a dollar per year, one with, with enforcing this extra added piece, and one without it. I mean, I think at that point, it gets too confusing. That's not going to work.
Right, and we probably don't want to get in a situation where the deputy's repairing our own, a lot of the contracts.
No.
So, I, you know, it, the idea is somewhat better when you talk about the state instead of.
I hope, if, if, if he's got enforced those, that's going to get ninety percent of the city.
I'd say it gets more than ninety percent. But we, you know, this, I started, I started this whole thing because I worked into, and we had no twenty eighty agreements with any town in Humboldt County. And I, I told Dean, I told the board, "We can't be operating in all of these towns with no agreement." And I stand by it. It concerns me that we operate in all of your towns right now with no agreement. It concerns me that we're here today, and I understand that nobody's really happy with this. When it first came up, I was mortified. I felt ready to bite my head off, and I understood, because these towns don't, you guys don't sit on a pile of money. This is, this is extra money that we're asking for, and, you know, the ten dollars was determined by Dean and members of the board calling around to figure out what these towns charge. And, you know, we're, we're not in a situation, like in Pocahontas, where Sheriff Lampe told the City of Rolph at a city council meeting a couple of years ago, it was going to be two million dollars a year for the Sheriff's Department to give law enforcement to Rolph. You know, and that will never happen here.
We did, we used to have twenty eighty agreement, but I don't know whether they ever fish up and never got.
Well, there was a lot of research from lawyers.
I've gotten a copy of that.
The only ones that we were teaming up.
Oh, both of them, yeah. Okay, I got the copy.
Maybe it was the bigger town. Maybe it was the larger city, never larger.
In, in some fairness, the Sheriff's Department, the board supervisors, back in the seventies, they had their own police force. They had a car, they had them, and they paid him. So, back then, when they retired him and went to where we've been, it went from fifteen, twenty thousand to zero. Dakota City, back in eighty-four, had a sheriff, a police department. You know, you were probably paying twenty, thirty thousand back then, and it went to zero for this forty-year period. So, the ten dollars, we hope, was not offensive and not out of line, when you're getting twenty-six thousand, that'll translate, you know, half of a salary, just a salary for your officer. You need to do the things that you will do to your opponent.
I was on city council for eighteen years, and the mayor told me when, someday, we're going to be paying for law enforcement. And that's been many years ago.
And we're, we're not disputing that.
It doesn't matter.
You're more concerned about the wording.
Right, yeah. We, we have to be assured that we're not going to be between a rock and a hard place, because there's a change of sheriff or whatever might happen. We're trying to look into the future a little bit.
But in eighteen, this agreement comes to an end, and it can be reviewed then. And I'd like to see at that time, you know, if all the towns are interested, that'll take some effort on the mayor's part, I think, to get together and present that all eleven communities are involved. And then at that point, we can change that change.
I would say that we, well, we're going to have to have some trust here, I think, in the next two years. And what we've said here today is being recorded. This can be, this is on video, I believe. We can call this back up and see what kind of verbal commitment we have to make sure this doesn't happen. But if it ever becomes a problem, if Dean doesn't follow through, or the next sheriff wouldn't follow through, we have a video recording that's saved for life, that can prove that we went into this with good faith. And I think you have to trust us to see it with good faith. Other than you back and interrupt us with all the towns we've already signed.
How can we just find about, find out about this agreement now, and since it's still a year ago, when you guys were talking about it? Why? I didn't find out much. I read in the Humboldt paper last month.
I guess we discussed it in-house and never got anything documented once talked.
It's been on the agenda.
Because, actually, we've talked about it for over a year, but we never.
And.
Well, you guys were still.
No, I, I believe it was discussed in open meeting many times. And I think the paper recorded, reported on it.
And the actual starting of communicating is from December till Jan-, July, so there's been seven months, you know, to get these signed. The options are, you don't have to sign it. You mean, you don't have to sign it, or, or you have ninety dollars, and you don't think we're performing. I mean, it's out there, but it's really not realistic that you can afford your own.
Dakota City, you could contract with another office. You could contract with the city of Humboldt, or the Susie County Sheriff. Or whoever you want. You just have to have something with somebody.
Well, the bottom line is, we know we're probably going to be here law enforcement. We'll keep continuing doing what we've been doing all this time. Like I said, in two years, you know, when it comes to time for you guys get your unified law enforcement levy, pass whatever, we can redo the contract, and then we can redo it then, I guess, so.
And as to rewriting the ordinance, that's Brad's advice, you know, that that would have to be done.
No, if you look at any of our city code ordinances that deal with nuisances, it says that a peace officer upholds that. So, if we don't have, that police officers uphold our ordinances, we have to take that out. So, therefore, we'd have to work with our attorney to have it taken out, and then have everything recodified. And I'm sure I'm not the only town that our ordinances all read that way.
But aren't you upholding that?
Well, Jerry, if you're taking, if you're putting it in a contract saying that they're not, even though he's going to, by his word, do it, in the contract that you guys all sent us, or that I got in December, it says he's not going to. So, then, per that contract, our ordinances and the contracts aren't the same. That's all they're saying, is that then they don't all mesh.
Yeah. Could you write something over that, that if, after trying to enforce yours?
But then I'm doing that for just, what, a year and a half or two years? You know, redoing something for that timeframe, and then redoing it again later when we do do a unified law enforcement contract, you know, levy. That's just a lot of extra costs.
The reason we wrote it up that way is, we didn't want our sheriff, you know, going cold for every little thing, and then the cost would get sky-high. Not that you would, because I know anyone would do it, but it would be written in that way that they could.
It just sort of ignited, when the contracts were given to us, if our attorneys could have reviewed them, so if we had any changes, I mean, so that we could all talk and make changes, and then say, "We'll make these contracts. We know that you will sign anything until March one, or February one," to give everybody's towns and attorneys time to look something over. Because for us to have a change or anything, you're all saying it didn't matter, because you already signed with Rutland, or you already signed with somebody else. So, you know, in all fairness, you know, Rutland's a town of how many, you know, for their, their dollar amount, or any of the. I mean, yeah, some of those, they, I mean, or, you know, Pioneer, you even think we're talking to Janet Birdie. I mean, Pioneer even paid you guys more than the two hundred and thirty. You know, for Dakota City, ours is obviously the biggest, eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. So, you know, we needed time for our attorney to review it, and, but even, I had a letter that, um, from Brad Legwold, after he reviewed it December twenty-first and made this change. You guys had already signed with Rutland by then. So, even in the couple of weeks that it was taken for our attorney to look something over, and I know that Board has the exact same contract as we did, because we all, we all have Brad Legwold, the same.
Just contract.
And I know that Livermore.
It's within July one, right?
Right.
Okay, we all, we were trying to hurry to get to the budget situation. We didn't.
And so are we, Carl.
We got the budget situation worked out. Maybe there's a compromise here. Maybe we can have a supplemental change of wording and get it to each town, let them ratify it. They can keep their old, they can keep their new. I don't know. I, I worry about having something different. But I see your concern about wording, but it's a trust between two years, and we probably have to change everybody for the most part. I don't think about this.
Again, I, I trust Dean.
Well, I'm sorry, I just said a lot. I mean, it could, I, we're wavering both ways, and I can see that. And that's good, because we're trying to reach a compromise. And, you know, I, I look at it, and I, I say to you guys, because the mayor's and the city clerks, if you don't like it, you can cancel that in ninety days. But I also see, if we were, and we have time, Carl's right, it's not till July first, if we were to change and add this in, and that was in agreement with the sheriff and the county attorney, we, if we didn't like the agreement, we could cancel out too. So, I don't think anybody's tied to this that they don't like it. I thought we were trying to just state that we continue the way it was, the way the contract is written. You're afraid of this part, you know, not enforcing or being involved. And I think as a board, we're afraid, we wouldn't want to take the five percent out, because there should be an increase. Otherwise, we should set a higher, we should increase it every year. So, is there a way we can compromise, leave the five percent in and work with this added statement? And that gets down to Dean's remarks, because he's ultimately the one that has to hand in our county attorney how he looks at this.
Well, if you have to put a date on. You have to put a date on that it, that all the agreements would have to be signed and back to us by June.
Yes.
Because if you're going to put it in effect in July, we can't be waiting on.
And we would have to go back and have.
Three different towns to say, "Well, are they coming, or are they not going to come?"
Well, I think that the towns that have signed, in order to address those.
We'd have to.
You'd have to cancel the agreement, which would not take a, come to a fact until, what?
July.
July.
October. You have to give them notice July first or second, and then it would end ninety days late, so.
I suppose we can't cancel it ninety days before it's.
Why can't you amend it?
That's probably true, too.
Is there a way we can amend that, or, or affect immediately, or cannot be done? I don't, I don't know. We just.
I, I don't know. I don't know that we left.
I, I see how the laws are wording. I really don't.
I don't think.
Because when you're, you say your ordinance will be enforced by a police officer. Isn't that the correct way? Well, if the person doesn't abide, you're going to call the sheriff's office.
But if we have a twenty eighty agreement that says, from you guys, and Dean, that says, "You don't do city code violations," that's going to supersede that.
It just says they will not enforce. That's it. That covers everything.
Is there any other word that's more appropriate? I, I, they're not, you're going to be calling, he's, he is going to enforce them, so I, I, I think, I think the problem was, is they don't want to be called for it. It'll be a nuisance call.
We don't want to.
Yeah.
And we know that.
And we're trying to find that.
Part of it is, it's not the cities that call them, it's the citizens. You know, so that's not going to change.
Right.
So, that, I mean, we don't call in first. If I got junk vehicles, I send letters, I deal with my attorney.
I bet you.
If we've got houses, we've got, I mean, I don't call in for.
It's very rare that we would call in.
The only time we probably get called for that is if you're going to go on someone's property with a record and pull the vehicle off, and then come there and keep the piece and stuff.
Because when you start removing property from somebody's.
Somebody gets upset.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they get upset, and that's where the threats can come and all of that. And that's what we're trying to prevent. And I just want to, we talk about different incidents. I'm just going to read a little bit here. Uh, this is from the incident, uh, listing. Silver complaint or problem, unlock a vehicle, disabled vehicle, alarm, burglary, accident, car deer, unlock vehicle, dog lost or found, alarm, burglary, domestic dispute, notification, unlock. We of Dakota City really had nothing to do with any of them. And we got page after page after page, and it's all the same. You get the picture.
Where did you get those?
Tacoma.
Dean.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering if it was from the Humboldt paper, like I was doing it.
No.
I wanted to.
No. No.
This is how they get covered, and section six, and number one, Eric says something about the fact, if we reread it, "These services are good, but not limited to radar patrol, and not mercy calls, service alarm, and so forth, to include responding to and investigating the city violations for not prosecuting thereof." Is that what we're going to do?
There's never profit for a city violation.
So, we all, we always saying that we're going to respond to those, I think, unless I'm reading something different.
That's one of those early.
This is Renwick in four.
Renwick in four.
Number one, section six.
Number one, section six.
Back on first page.
Is that one of them in our package?
Yes. I think we're covering.
It's in both, uh, the twenty-one and the one the city has before.
Shining clear, but not limited to her. You see that? That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, it states it right there.
I think we're covering you on this here. Maybe I made a different one.
This is what we're presenting.
And it never said that you're not.
Right.
Do you have the, the original contracts that you've signed with anybody?
Yeah.
I mean, if you just took the line out that says we will not enforce.
I never seen that one.
It's the last sentence, it says, "This is not included in enforcement of city code violations." I mean, if you just took that last sentence out.
That's all you got to do. That's the easiest part. Sometimes, whatever you don't say is better.
Right.
What is that, unauthorized? I haven't made any.
What do you think about that?
Right here.
The river?
Oh, yes.
That's, yeah.
I don't see it.
Not official.
Well, this part is in the cities here.
I see that.
Thursday dropped that last statement about not enforcing.
Because our ordinance says they will. And every city, and I figure it's the same thing.
So, instead of putting it that they will, drop the part that says they will not.
Correct. Just to leave that line up.
So, John, let me ask you this. Pretty simple. Hardy and Rutland, correct, have signed, and we've approved, correct?
So, we have a doubt, too.
But between Board and Renwick are going to approve, but they haven't, we haven't approved on our side. So, couldn't we, the ones that are just already signed, couldn't we toss that out and pull parties initial it or do something? Unless they already, so we wouldn't have to read, give them ninety days' notice to cancel.
I think the problem is, they already approved this one.
Do we have two different doctrines floating around?
We do. We gave, we sent one to you that has all the other towns listed, and you have maybe the original that you had sent us.
What they have in front of them is just the one you presented.
Right here. This is everything.
The expectation of all these towns.
I would do anything to act.
You guys have already agreed to, you're going to sign it.
Maybe we could.
But we could also.
The mayor doesn't hear no, maybe they.
Strike it, and send it back to them. If that's what they agreed to.
So, what was that, Bruce?
I said, I don't know why, if, if that's the wording that we're hung up on, why can't you strike it out of there, send it back to them? If they've already signed it, agreeing to it, then they sure as heck could.
Well, the problem is, we have to cancel the one, put it on the agenda to restate the new one.
I understand, though. Otherwise, they'd send it to, what, three, four o'clock in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Beat it up? Or you could put it on the agenda again.
Uh, I'm just, we aren't good anywhere.
Sounds good.
Mark, what do you want to do? Just seem like the end of the layer is the one to do it. Most of them are here.
Yes. You still have, each, each of these agreements says the city of whatever, of which, if that means, or if there's technical violations, or if the city code.
Clear it out. Number four.
The original contract, I was going to, I think, from cover the water front with all the towns.
The ones that I didn't sign, I agreed to, or to amend those.
You could do that till July first.
Mine's being read.
It's July two.
Like, they'll go to effect this July.
All right, so we need to.
Yeah, they'd have to go back to their councils and get all their council to agree to it.
But that's only two towns. But that's only two towns.
Well, it's four that are already signed on that deal.
We haven't gotten Thors and Renwick back yet.
So, maybe we could catch you. Well, it's up to you, Mark, if you, if you think you can make this work. I'm not opposed to it. I mean, it's, it's part of the process. It's getting through it and making it's agreeable for everybody.
You know, I've done an inflation, this section six one is what we've been arguing to, and that covered the water front. I guess I hadn't even looked at the other. I was, I was stuck. I didn't go to any of the cities, because I was here in Humboldt, but.
But I think now, Carl, what they're asking is just eliminate the one that says we will not enforce, not change any of that.
Right.
She doesn't say we. If I say we will not, doesn't say we will either, other than what's written in other parts of the agreement. I don't think Dean's going to do any more or less than what he's been doing at this point.
I don't think any sheriff's going to do any more or less. They know they got to take care of it.
Right.
Yeah, if you're not a really person in your town, we're going to be there to take care of it, that will do. But I'm not jamming with you, people.
No, Jim.
If we wanted to have it signed, what would we have to do? How, what's the process to do this, then, if we're going to check in? So, John, what's the process?
The one that happens inside.
Right. If we were to strike that one line.
You'd put it on the agenda?
Right.
And then, I have a chat out about whether you're going to change the agreement.
Okay.
If you change the agreement, then my suggestion would be, you have Dean's agreement secured. If Dean decides he's not going to sign the updated agreement, then everybody's wasting their time. And then, you send it out to the other towns, and you have them what they do. And, uh, before they've already agreed to it, I guess we'll deal with whatever they have to say about it.
Well, I think we'd send them a letter, and if they know they're going to take that out, if it protects them more, I would think we would send a ninety-day notice to cancel it, and rewrite the new one with them on the same date. That'd be my thoughts.
Can they ratify a change by voting the council?
Myself, I would rather go to those city councils myself and talk to them.
Well, you should. You're right.
Yeah.
You should.
Instead of sending a letter, I'd rather just go to them and explain what happened, what's going on.
I think that's, I think that's fair. And I think so we could run with it. We haven't voted on it or agreed to it. I think we'd get very great on it.
So, I need to tell you, because the major sheriff, the sheriff's department is, they're going to end up in a situation where the city attorney, whatever, sounds, or telling them what to do, um, in that, you know. I, I don't know what, if you say that you'll be investigated or enforced by law, a peace officer, you know, you may just need the Sheriff's Department the right to take it. But I, I don't, I can tell you that I would probably have Dean in my office if your all, your city attorneys are taking up a ton of Sheriff's Department time, investigating something that may lead to you.
Well, if that was to happen, I think we'd have to hold it, Dean.
And then, that's why the cost.
We'd have to raise the cost of terminating ourselves if we wasn't happy. Correct? That would be our option.
And I think that's what happened.
When you say most of the time, when they make use of it. Most of the time, all kinds of problems.
City office violations happening, what goes on with certain things, people are given time to take care of it, certain things can pay a penalty or apply to. Or city's peaceful, or whatever.
That's city, like.
You know, there's not.
Usually, you know, they're, the state criminal. We usually write it under state law. It's just, uh, junk vehicles and all that kind of stuff. I'm not dealing with, that's not the city's problem, not.
Well, at which time, we terminate in ninety days, if you felt this was out of hand, and we had a meeting, and everybody agreed this is changed. Or you don't want to pay three dollars, or you want to just cancel the contract. Because everybody has a right to, because of what. Or would you be willing to consider that one sentence changed?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine with me. I, we're going to keep the five percent. I think it's not going to change the mode of operation, but if it makes everybody feel better, I think we don't make.
We'll try. We'll have to, I mean, I think we can talk to Renwick and Thor, and let them know the situation, and if we have this sent right back out to them, maybe we could go from there. Because we haven't approved theirs.
Yeah.
And Hardy, and we'd have to, just cancel it right away, and explain why we're doing it, and have that, take that one to them in ninety days, and have them sign it, and we'll be back, good to go again. Does that seem fair to everybody? All right, let's go with that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your time, Mark. We appreciate it. Maybe we can get it straightened out after all.
The mayor, the board behind Dean, man, you guys, because that's the only one I remember.
I haven't seen that one, dude.
Thanks for coming.
All right, yeah.
Trying to get back on course here. We're up to drainage at this point.
I'm going to go change.
I have a motion to go to drains. Is there a second?
I'll do it.
On third.
Thanks, Peggy. If your blades are hot, you can back to Humboldt. Hey, you need to look at the picture that he took down in the morning.
I saw it.
No, no.
Of the board, of the board, of some of these cities.
Some of what their towns are paying. It's thirty seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents.
How many people are there?
Twenty-one ninety-nine. Hey, Ward, it's twenty-five hundred and forty-three people, and they're paying a hundred and sixty-five.
All right. You've had a long morning. We're running behind. That being said, we're going to Peggy. Good morning, Mike. Good morning. Uh, our first item, dang, your afternoon. Our first item will be Dean one twenty-five.
Our first item will be D D eleven, we have accepted Fraser's report. Oh, God, wait down, yeah, I missed. Our first item is D D eleven.
Yep.
Go ahead, Rick.
D D eleven. Sub one. Oh, all the reclassifications. We've got ten reclassifications today, and we're, I'm just gonna give you a really brief summary on them, and then the main thing is we wanna set a hearing date and time for all of these. I've clipped them all together. Every other one is a different color. Um, it's drainage district eleven, sub district one through six, twenty-two, twenty-five, sixty-nine, and the common outlet ditch for twenty-two and twenty-five. So, I'm just gonna give you each one of these. He gives the, oops, sorry. He gives the, uh, total cost for each parcel on the, uh, second to the last column on the right. And then the right column is a cost breaker. Now, the costs we've shown here are just for the reclassification, because there isn't any work, uh, being done on these. So, the first was two sheets of paper, um, printed on two sides. Um, we'll start out with District eleven here. Here's where they are. And you can.
Not open, right?
Yes, eleven, sub one, first one. Here's where the sub districts are. Sub six isn't on here, I'll point that out though. Okay, um, sub one is kinda at the bottom of the page. If you look, well, if you look to the right, where you see twenty-two and twenty-five, the up and down line there is Highway one sixty-nine on this drawing. So, over here, the up and down one, that's one sixty-nine. And then this blob here is Bode, and then the one up a little farther is Odison. Just to get you kinda where you're at. You can see kinda multiple lines here above sub four, that's Bode. And over here above sub three, that's Odison. We wanted to get all these in one drawing, uh, for you to work with, um, so. Okay, you can see the range and cost breaker are very low, uh, two dollars and fifty-nine cents to, uh, four dollars and something per acre. And the reason it's so low is it's just for the reclassification. I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain just briefly on this one how we went about it, and then the procedure was the same on the rest of them. We use the soils as our starting point, with points breaker, um, on the soils based on the need for drainage. And then that takes care of some things like elevation, slope, crop. Um, and then we, uh, we did some reductions on each of these. If they're over a quarter of a mile away from the county main, we did a small reduction, like ten percent. If they're a quarter to three quarters of a mile away, did like fifteen percent. If they're, um, three quarter to a mile, I think it was, um, twenty percent. And then if they had to cross a road, uh, twenty-five percent reduction. So, we tried to use proximity also. And that's what we ended up using on all of these reclasses that you have before you today. Um, total cost for sub one reclass, we've estimated it, um, eighty-three hundred dollars. It's a little bit of a bigger one. Uh, the average cost break is about three dollars and seventy cents an acre. Uh, that's on page four of four, sub one. The forty day period, if you go six weeks, that gets you to April twenty-fifth. And Trish, were you thinking that would be sufficient? So you need to set the hearing date at least forty days out, and then she has to do a mailing and get it published at least twenty days before the hearing. So that gives her about three weeks to get these all put together. And that agenda was open?
He said April fifth?
Twenty-fifth. And we'll have, we can discuss a little bit how long we think each one of these might take. I can't imagine they take very long. It's not a lot of money, they're fairly small, um, you know, whether you allow ten minutes each or fifteen minutes each, you can have some flexibility there. So we're looking for hearing date setting for sub district one of D D eleven for April twenty-fifth, and then however you wanna start the times.
Start them at about nine-thirty, so I got time for this other stuff to work in these, and I don't think it's gonna take that long for each one, but in case we do. So I would recommend a nine-thirty start, and then how much do you wanna space?
We don't have to space everything up, we just say beginning at nine-thirty, period.
Well, we, you, you'll need to designate a time for each of them, but.
Yeah, we'll write a letter on it.
Let's, let's give them, I would think five minutes, seven, ten minutes, ten minutes, you're looking at about an hour and a half. Maybe I'll run five minutes, you get ahead, you, you get behind, but anyway.
If you're behind, you can wait and do it if you're. Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
Maybe five minutes.
Yeah. Get them all in train.
Well, we got five minutes.
That's probably two, one might take ten minutes, one might take two, and that might take.
Yeah.
Some of these are small enough, and there's little enough cost that you may have nobody here even.
Guess I care, I don't know if this last reclass done, probably not ever.
Oh, yeah, most of these have not been done. They, they were only done as, as inclusive of District eleven, not as sub districts, yeah.
So, would somebody make a motion to start the reclass hearings at nine-thirty?
Is that the way it's handed on, is nine-thirty? April twenty-fifth, I'll make that motion.
There's a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Good. Okay, the white sheets you come to, or I'm sorry, no, the, the yellow sheet you come to, that's sub two of D D eleven. It's just a side and a half, um, total cost of twenty-nine hundred dollars estimated. Um, where we do this, we took all, we had in it and added a little, like to cover hearings and things. And these are, these are gonna go so quick, like, some of these won't even get charged that day, um, when we have hearings, if it's five minutes, I'm not gonna charge. But probably the bigger ones would get a half hour or something. But anyway, total estimated cost twenty-nine hundred, so the average cost per acre for this ended up two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Same, same procedure as we did on the other one, um, and, yeah, we're looking, I guess, to set a hearing date and time again for this.
Hearing date would be, uh, April twenty-fifth at nine-twenty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, I'm sorry. Oh, he's gonna like that one, he pays the most of anybody.
Yeah.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That's a good point, Rick, because we, the commissioners, we didn't make big change, but when we just did soils, they felt that Secretary Rose wasn't paying enough.
Yeah, I see that, 'cause he, he.
Yep, he will be a little bit higher than any of the others, but there are some not far behind.
Yeah.
But, yes, that's correct. Next one is sub three of eleven, uh, that has, uh, three sides to pages there. Um, it's a white one, total estimated cost forty-five hundred dollars, or an average cost of two dollars and eighty-five cents an acre. Again, same procedure, um, sub three is kinda in the upper left of that color drawing they gave you up next to eleven extension. That's the general location of that one. Again, looking for date and time.
Motion to set the time at nine-forty for. Eleven?
Okay.
All in favor?
Alright.
Next one is the yellow sheets, again, that's sub four of eleven. Um, total estimated cost thirteen hundred dollars, this one's just not even quite two full sides. This one ended up very quick, uh, dollar nine an acre, average cost. So, yeah, some of those were, ended up less than a dollar an acre on this one, like I said.
Motion for sub district four of eleven?
I'll make the motion.
Five?
Make the motion for sub district four.
Carl's second, all in favor?
Alright.
Next one is sub five of eleven. Um, that's kinda in the center of your drawing, that's the bigger shaded one, um, kinda orange shading. This one went quickly to twenty-nine hundred total cost for a dollar twenty-one an acre average cost. Um, yeah, looking for the same thing.
Okay, this is sub five of eleven at nine-fifty, is there a motion?
Yeah, so many.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is sub six of eleven, that's not quite two full sides, um, for listing. It's the yellow paper, total cost twenty-five hundred dollars estimated, average cost two dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, same procedures.
I'm struggling finding six on this map.
Oh, oh, so that's the one that's not there. Um, it's up, okay, if you see sub three, up in the, kinda the left, upper left, it's to the southwest. It's like, three is the north kinda of it, and eleven's to the west of it. For some reason, it didn't get on here. It's pretty much surrounded by three, sixty-one, and extension eleven. That's the general area we are. Sub three drains into the north side of ditch, sub six drains into the south side of ditch, almost exactly at the same spot.
Okay.
Sorry, I meant to say that.
So I'm gonna make a motion.
Is that nine fifty-five now?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Rose is second.
I'll second.
Rick, all in favor?
Aye.
Next one is white sheets, again, that's District twenty-two. If you look way over to the right, uh, twenty-two and twenty-five kinda straddle Highway one sixty-nine, um, they're both tile districts, and you'll see as we get back here to the end. There's also then a common outlet ditch that leads from twenty-two and twenty-five to the ditch for D D eleven. So, what you, what you're looking at right now is twenty-two, that's the one that's mostly east of Highway one sixty-nine, way to the right on your drawing. This one ended up a little more expensive, just more involved, fifty-four hundred and fifty dollars for an average cost of four dollars and fifty-nine cents, uh, per acre. Same, same procedure again.
I moved at the reclassification, hearing date, twenty-fifth at ten o'clock.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Next one is the yellow sheets, again, D D twenty-five, that's the one just to the west of twenty-two and mostly west of one sixty-nine. Um, total cost ended up thirty-eight hundred and fifty dollars for an average cost of four dollars and seventeen cents an acre. Again, same procedure for this. Give me a five?
Yep. Make a motion.
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
That is twenty-five, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, now, the next white sheet you'll see is twenty-two and twenty-five common ditch. This did not have any, uh, reclassification before. There's a ditch that they share that gets their water to ditch eleven. So, twenty-two and twenty-five are sharing in the cost. If you compare the twenty-two and twenty-five reclassification to this one, you'd see that all those parcels are also in this common outlet ditch. But this is only for worth on the outlet ditch. Uh, this ended up very economical, uh, partly because twenty-two and twenty-five were done already. So it was thirty-one hundred dollars, or an average cost of a dollar forty-seven per acre. Again, same procedure.
So the most for twenty-two and twenty-five with common ditch?
Ten, ten?
Ten, ten.
I can move.
Carl's second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last but not least here, it looks like it might be the smallest one, half a page, D D sixty-nine. Yeah, it is over there in the neighborhood of twenty-five and twenty-two. Um, very small, two hundred and five acres. Um, because it was so small, the average cost ended up over six dollars an acre, but that's still total, total cost for the districts thirteen hundred dollars. Um, and all those numbers should get us through hearing on all of these, so. Same thing, date and time to be set.
Nine fifteen?
Yes. Any motion to this?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Yep. The setting the hearing dates are not usually too bad, it's, you usually don't have this many. We have four more ready for signature, too, and I'll be bringing those in one of these first days, yeah.
Okay, now we can go to D D twenty-five.
Let's see.
Oh, you just, I'll raise your voice.
Oh, yeah, um, I'm gonna wait on that appraisal report, you have not received that. Um, I need to just give you a two minute update on that, because we had figured easements on all of that, um, and the Dickey property is not the correct area at this point. Um, potentially good news is that, uh, Mike Borland with the state says that if we can justify the extra rock that's used on the job, and we can, we have plans to show every spot that it was used, we have pictures of every area to show how lousy the conditions were, that he thought he could come up with some extra money towards the project. So, and I met with Denver Friday, and we're really close on quantities, um, on that. Uh, Cretex, we're getting really close with them, I'm hoping yet this week to sit down with them, and then have numbers to see exactly where we're at for total project cost, and how much money it would take to take care of that. So, it's still, we're getting really close, and it's, we're, I'd say we're no more than a week or two away from getting a final pay estimate submitted to you, so you know exactly what the total costs are gonna be for materials and installation.
Because that rock is about how much more of it?
Oh, it was, it was like thirty-five hundred tons.
But in dollars, no?
Oh, like a hundred grand.
So that would give us quite a bit of room.
Oh, yes, a lot of room to work if he gets that approved.
If he improved that.
Yes, and they, we got, we, we worked with the supplier and got information on how many rocks, how many tons they used total, fifty-six hundred. So they used two thousand tons that they figured they'd use themselves, so.
Which is probably on the high side, too.
Yes, 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 it was, yeah.
So you might consider on that part of it.
Yes, that's correct, yeah, Mike said he, if we get documentation and the things he mentioned, we can provide, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah. I'm, I'm anxious to get Mike the numbers, so we can see what he can come up with.
Okay, so you wanna hold off?
I wanna hold off on that.
Table it?
Table it, and I'll, we'll get it back on the agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
Table on one twenty-five?
Yes, we are.
Do we have to have a motion on the table or not?
No, I just, no, I don't, because you, technically today you're accepting it and setting a hearing date, and you just won't do it.
Then you do it.
Right.
Alright, since Rick is here, still, are we ready for D D four?
I think so, I wonder if I should put this up?
I think you should, probably.
So we're taking here.
So now we're going to D D four, and this will be a discussion on repairs, and what's going on in the drainage district.
That's Braggay.
That's Braggay, yes, Braggay. Are you going to know, Peggy?
No, I'm just, I'm just checking for Braggay.
Oh, you're just checking wrong, but there he is. Pleasure to meet you. You mean?
I mean.
You, pleasure to meet you. You've been here all day, huh? Man, you're the oldest.
Well, we had the twenty-eighteen agreement and the mess, so.
You got a lot going on.
He got you from New York Times or something.
Well, I wasn't sure if anyone else knew.
I think it's okay. I'll just take two minutes here to get everybody kinda oriented a little bit with this drawing. Um, you can see the lines here to differentiate the blocks within Braggay, and if, just follow me, this will be the east main, goes right up through town. And to get you about where we need to be to understand where we're at, this run, this is the branch C, that runs along the south side of your county road, the main county road that goes east of town. So, from the river up to that main road, and then it goes north northwest, um, over a mile, like, about a mile north of town, actually, mile north of this road. Actually, further than that as far as the water's yet. Now, something we talked about in the office, there's also a west main, so a lot of this water gets through the west main. That's, we're not dealing with that right now, at least, as far as I know right now. Um, branch B was, um, replaced, Al did that. Yep, yep, so this has been done. It appears that a lot of the problem is getting to the river from that point, because they were pumping, I think they pumped out an intake in the road ditch up here.
Yes.
And, and water kept coming pretty good. So we're thinking that, um, a lot of this to the north is fine, that we need to go from this, uh, to the river. Um, now, there were tree roots, a lot of them in, some of this tile, um, Southwood County Road, a block. Now, there were tree roots, a lot of them in, some of this tile, Southwood County Road, a block and a half. Hard to get rid of all those with the size of pipe and the number of trees.
A lot of those trees are probably a foot or better diameter, so the roots are about as long as the top half. So there's several root mat balls.
Yes, tremendous amount of roots in those. There's a few trees along the trail also that could be causing a problem. And there are some problems at the outlet, there's a large tree right over the outlet, outlet of the river.
That tree is laying in the river, right?
Uh, there's one standing just to the bulkhead, I believe. I thought that was a picture Jason gave me.
Is that where that drains into the, off the burn? You sent me down?
Yeah, there's a piece of concrete there. Now, there's here about two-thirds of that tile when the water's down. Okay. A lot of this lower part has trees over town too. And some of this is state ground also. The general feeling in the office is that you need to do maybe a repair by replacement for as much of this line as need be. Particularly where the trees are, we're, we're gonna reroute outside the trees. Our push with DNR will be that we're gonna give up the easement over the old tile possibly and move it over the new tile at this outlet. So we're not affecting them any more than they've ever been affected. The other thing is, because of our reclassification work in DD seventy a year or two ago, we've discovered that these, this east boundary is a little different than, than it is on this map. There's fifty-five acres up here that need to be annexed. That'll just help pave the project. Yes, so we'll, we reclassify the east main, including the fifty-five acres. And then that would give people a really good idea on what cost they might be looking at. Haven't really put a solid number together. There was a petition submitted for the repair and there was a petition submitted for reclassification. So I guess what we'd be looking for is obviously some discussion, but authorization to go ahead and get those put together as quickly as possible. Oh, shoot, I didn't look back at that again. No, it's not a lot, no. I was gonna see if I could count. Maybe?
Six, ten?
Six, ten?
That'd be just the east main, I assume. Need to do all of it? That looks like not enough for all of it. I think Melanie's been a lot of line up there. Can you tell us about all the damage it's caused once you're out there first? Try and get some help.
Yeah, I attended the ICAP conference this last week. I came up with one option. It's called the ICAP grant. And the county is insured by ICAP. So we can ask for up to a thousand dollars towards safety equipment. I need to make a call today, I'm hoping that, that will include like a pump or something else that Bragate needs. Now, I don't know if Bragate has ICAP insurance or is it through another company? No? The other option, I can get you up to two thousand dollars possibly because I have insurance for my commission through ICAP as well. So there would be two thousand dollars. And from my understanding, when the equipment's purchased, then we just send the receipts in. And I have the form here that they can copy off as many times as they need to. And then they will reimburse up to a thousand dollars. So hopefully I've got two thousand dollars. I was really hoping you guys had it through ICAP and then we would've been looking at three thousand, but, you know, I'm not gonna look and give towards the amount. I don't know and I'm just, you know, I went from place to place trying to find out where the grants were and that. So right now the USDA too, I wanted to let you guys know, and I don't know if I said it the other night at your meeting, it's a first come, first served. They've got X amount of dollars in this USDA fund and once it's handed out, it's done for the year. So I would encourage even before, you know, you get this problem resolved, if your residence is interested in this, contact a gal here in Humboldt, get her out to your place and they can, they will come through. They will look at your house, they will help you assess the damages, they will even fill out the applications for your people. So it's kind of a no-brainer and it's a good deal. So right now that's the one best option I have for you.
This, Al, you're talking about Melanie, you said a pump and stuff like that?
It has to go towards safety equipment, so something for your town that's gonna prevent or be a safety feature, a pump, you know, if you wanna put it towards a backup generator or something like that. If there's a piece of equipment that you guys can think of that's going to, you know, really help your town, then let me know because I can try to get the two thousand dollars to help you.
Right now we're pumping electricity out of a small one, certainly Evers, that's where that picture was the paper. And stuff, but really I can see maybe putting in a bigger one, maybe we'll have to go to town and how big ours is.
I don't know how much they cost.
And stuff, but we've got the trail opened up, Alan worked on that over there behind that place and mine down through his property and stuff. Moving a lot of water, but I think we could move a lot more. I'd like to see it drained down to where if we did get a rain, it would go into the soil.
We've got rain forecast and then I think by the end of my, I think I've got a seven or eight days. There was one day it had snowflakes on it, like I hear it. So, you know, we still can have, we can still have moisture.
Well, you know, it's like I said, the main problem is here and we're looking at repair most likely. Just you don't have to jump through so many hoops. But I believe that the blockage it's had, the improvement in drainage would be drastic. Have, we have to talk some more about if we can save any of this and I don't, that might mean digging some of it up. For example, a place that doesn't have trees in it and it's pretty open, maybe it's okay. I think under the tracks we'll have to do, or no, I keep saying tracks. Yeah, yeah. And then up closer to the city street there, where the connection for B is, that's where a lot of the tree roots were, that they took some of them out.
Where's, on that map, where's that intake that was right by the road, is that right up?
Right here.
It's right there.
Close to where branch B takes us.
That's where we're pouring water in the field.
So that just east, we elevated it or is that it?
If you, what's the size, what's the size of this main from branch B down?
Uh, some of it's twenty-four, some of it's twenty-six. Is it all twenty-four? I thought I saw twenty-six on a small piece, but twenty-four is what we're looking at probably.
In town with roots, we're, I think we're only eighteen.
Yeah. And I've got the old profile in the file there that we can look at if you want to.
So if we do life upside that pipe?
Well, yeah, it's called a improvement. No, if you're, if you're going bigger at all, it's an improvement. And I mean, obviously if we do a quick report on this, we'll include the cost for something bigger.
But either it's no replacement, as much issue with the roots might be, it should make a big improvement. You're saying, you're saying the water coming to that intake is getting in there. As long as we're pumping now, we keep getting water in.
Yeah, what, yeah, Jason in our office told me, the water was coming pretty good.
Yeah, we don't take it nothing north of there.
Yeah, that's, that's the read he was getting from people and the way the water was coming to that point.
From the first day they put the pump into the very next morning at nine, when I met with Alan and those guys, that water really come down.
That's what, I understand. So that's why from, from here on basically is, are there issues and how much do you have to replace? And yeah, like I say, once you're figuring drainage coefficients, it'd take twenty minutes to put another option in there for something.
So nor reaching, not going to an improvement is length of time in paperwork.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's not that big a deal. We probably, I don't know if we'll have to go to an application to the core, but it should not be any issue with the core. This should be a non-regulatory.
And if you go to improvement, then it gets much more difficult.
Yeah, yeah, but it's very doable. You guys have been through so many improvements. Yeah, yeah, technically if you do an improvement here, you have to put wetlands, that's a huge red flag or could be. This sets enough higher, it's maybe not, it'd have to be a pocket up on there because there's, there's a lot of fall from there down here. Then it just flattens way out down here.
Are you able to take those, any of those trees out down below towards the river?
We could do it on the trail for sure. It's gonna be difficult to get permission through the state ground.
If we just stack them?
Well, it happens. Well, I bet you we're gonna take some out just to get the pipe in.
Well, that's what I wondered.
Yeah.
We should have a little hundred feet or so.
Hundred foot minimum. Yes, and two options we'd look at for pipe material. And I'd like some input from Al if he's got some preference here too or what he thoughts are. Concrete, we just let one last week in Tewa Alta County and they, they supplied rubber gaskets, so there were watertight joints. This tile, this pipe is not gonna be the one that drains the land, it's gonna be the one that carries the water away. So you can either go concrete pipe with rubber gaskets or you can go the plastic pipe and it's gasketed to keep the roots out. Now, I don't know if preparation is doing any good because if you have trees, those little roots can get through almost anything.
But now direct that part going through town, would you consider moving that out of, out of town, up on the edge or on the field?
Yes, yes, this part here, we just come a little bit east and then south.
You're not far from this town. You're away from all the trees.
I wanted about a twenty-five foot, or whatever it was, to the fence.
Yeah, just get it out of the field, away from the trees.
Which is wide open, there's nothing out of it, right?
Yeah, yeah. I know, that's, that's the hangup.
What lays better than that plastic?
Well, you gotta get it based under either of them. Yeah, yeah. Probably a little easier handling plastic, but it tends to float. So you get it for backup. Plastic ends up a little paper under it last week.
Six, six dollars? I mean, what did you say it was?
Okay. Okay, a foot, yeah.
Well, I'd expect to see about the same amount.
Well, yeah, each one is, it's not disturbed or broken or, I mean, plastic is a little more susceptible to damage, but it's buried and it's not much. Not very deep. That would concern me.
I'm worried.
It's not overly deep right now.
Five feet, probably down to it.
Yeah. Good for farming over.
Look on the outside, but it's just smooth.
Yeah, and it's not real corrugated on the outside. We've gone to polypropylene. Yeah, you can get them in thirteen or twenty-foot lengths. Two guys can carry a very good sized diameter one. So that makes it a little easier that way for shipping and handling. But I've also been on jobs where they've used a second excavator to hold the pipe down.
Yeah, that's kinda scary.
That's scary, coming out of the river.
Yeah, the sand is gonna make it more expensive.
We had that last, where the dam is, the last two-hundred feet, let's say, where it's all humped up and treated. Zeroically, four-foot plastic tile in there. But, and I know the bill didn't match what he did. Because he didn't call the farmer right there that day, he knows what went in there. So I think we should dig that up and see what's in there.
Good idea.
As well as behind buses where you pumped the tree roots, we pumped the tree roots that day. I think we need to clean that out, know more what it's gonna take and get this water out of here. The tile's been there a hundred and twenty years and it's working until the last two because of the trees. Why don't we take care of the trees first? And make nothing else run a camera up there and see, we could spend, you know, a thousand bucks and maybe save us a hundred and thirty.
Well, that's, yeah. Some of it's gonna have to be, I mean, it's, it's hard to save the tile and get the tree roots out sometimes, you almost have to dig it up.
They got water generators that will cut that roots out if you kill the trees.
We ran into that too, they said, well, you fix the eight-inch tile.
Oh, too big?
On the internet, it's the company makes it, they said twelve. Well, I would think we'd figure it under that. But we know where the tree roots is at, we can see them.
Yeah, well, you see the trees, yeah.
It's easy to go.
Yeah.
And if you got a picture of it right away, why don't we take the trees off twenty, twenty-five feet each way from that?
Oh, yeah, that, that.
That's the problem, is the trees. Why don't we fix the problem?
The trees are a big part of the problem. We don't know otherwise if there's issues with the tile. I think there might have to be something done at the outlet. And the problem too is, you're not gonna get permission to clear the trees off of the top of.
Well, if that's already sealed tile.
If it is, yes, that's a good point.
And that root wasn't there when I was a kid.
Good point.
And who would've put that there, so. My assessment then was six hundred bucks.
What you're saying, Alan, is that, you know, when you tree yourself, clear the tree, all right? Back a hundred years ago, just put in, everybody was told, don't plant any trees there because it's a tile. If twenty-five years down, don't plant any trees there, well, nobody forgets it. They plant trees over the top and, so you're back at it again.
Doesn't, does the county have any jurisdiction over that, what's planted there?
Not really, well, they can grind it.
But it is a county tile.
Yeah. You could, you can send the letters, you can visit with people and say.
They have a whole property that the tree is on, when he's out, he's like, get rid of the trees, that's the problem, get rid of them, we don't care. So I don't think there's an issue with.
The one concern I had was, I mean, if, if you get a floor and find out there was this tree roots and it was something to clean out, tile might be good, there's not a lot of weight pressure on those tiles going through town. The other problem, yeah, if there is more issues, you know, there's quite a few leach fields now and there's bone eyes and trees, all of that's on top of that. If, long term, at some point, the best thing is to be outside of that, the town altogether. I mean, it would, I mean, there's cost involved maintaining it in town if it continues to be a problem. Now, if the outlet's the biggest problem, maybe you open that up and it, it does clear itself up. But that being said, I think the problems are always gonna continue with the stretches in town.
We don't have enough information yet. Does that satisfy us and justify that much money?
Yeah. And, and we're talking about a report that'll just give you a couple of options and it, and it will include cleaning that out.
Consider it a thousand different things he can come up with.
Because I do know when you open up the town, you put in a camera or a roof, they charge you. You wanna be real.
You wanna be real.
Current, what do you think that cost will be, be very realistic.
We're always looking at a couple of hundred feet of them we're working.
I know, but we run into especially cameras, is it, they charge?
They have to get into the tile.
Right after I bought my house, I put my sand plate down seven feet, well, I would've gone to eleven feet to get water. Now, when it's done, we find a piece now, well, that water table does come up and down quite a bit. And this was the worst time of the year.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna say. We can wait just a little bit.
I think we should.
Yeah. The reclass, I think, is important because it, well, we get these fifty-five acres in, we try and balance the, the cost with city and ag. Yeah, I, I think you're gonna want that no matter what. Yeah, I don't know, I didn't look at. I do too, yeah. And the reason we can come up with the acreage is we did the, on the seventh boundary, we weren't set out based on elevation. We have a good boundary that we can justify completely.
So I think at this point, you need, you're gathering more information, you're gonna come back with cost estimates on all of this.
Yes, yes.
And then we look at it again, I think we need to, I'll give it a little time, but we know we're gonna need to do something at the moment.
Yes, I feel.
We had a meeting the other night, we were, Joe Harris, Tom from Rookham was there, my guy was there.
Yep.
And everybody had a different opinion on how, how it's gonna get paid for. We started a meeting across from each other and everybody's got a different opinion. So you kind of need to nail that down a little bit too.
Yes, if it is.
That's why if you do the reclass first, that helps out.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, we're sure they're gonna contribute, but I mean.
Then do it over six.
If the assessment's over five hundred dollars, they can spread it anything from ten years to twenty years as far as payment. And it's all worked out here in the courthouse.
They have more property than the city does. So I'm kinda.
You're a major land developer, I know you are, just from the properties I know you have.
Yeah, well, Oscar here pays, he hasn't been down here eight years. He paid forty bucks on the last assessment. Yeah, well, Oscar here pays, he hasn't been down here eight years, he paid forty bucks on the last assessment, he paid seven hundred. So how's that gonna figure out with a hundred and thirty thousand?
I'll tell you in a few weeks here, so. We can, we'll, we'll come up with that.
So that's, you know.
As a matter of fact, I took a little chance company wise that we, this would drop, and we actually worked on the reclass a little bit last week, and we got the numbers pretty close.
So you even had that real quick.
We had that real quick, so.
So really, at this time, we need to keep that pump going, it is what, it's doing a lot, there's a lot of water coming out of it.
Well, the one we've got in over by Eaters.
Okay.
The other one, we're putting that out of the farmer's field, and he's been by and, oh boy, he's not, you know.
Well, he ain't gonna like it, you know, another couple of weeks, you know, a lot of water on it.
You know, so, nobody's talking about a pump, I'd like to put one, hopefully it gets ready to man, but with enough hose to take, put down by the, by the, uh, crossing and the trail.
Yeah.
To get it far enough away.
We got hose.
You got enough to do that?
Well, the fire department's gotta go from well to well, three hundred feet high.
Okay.
So I mean, if we go along the backside, keep it off of that farmer's field, off the.
Yep.
Major's field, 'cause I don't want him having down on us.
Right.
Do you have a designated, uh, electrical, like a outlet for it?
We don't look to have a pump.
Pardon?
We, we need a pump before we know what it takes to flood it.
Are, are we able to get an electric pump through like Scott?
It has to be, it has to be some.
He has an electric pump.
We've got one.
As long as we had a designated outlet for it, so we weren't using somebody's electricity and then running the risk of overloading it and then.
Right.
We want the city to pay the bill.
Right.
Yeah.
But they, I heard, I just heard some discussion, and they don't wanna blow somebody's circuit that they're running from, and there are some pumps don't work.
Supply electricity's not the issue, we just need to know what it's gonna take, and we'll take care of it from there.
Okay.
So, so Alan, you're, you're wanting a, an electric pump?
We don't wanna have a gas pump, 'cause nobody got a man.
Right, you got a man, so we, okay, the issue is we need to find him an electric pump.
Anytime, whatever it is, we'll supply electricity, I don't care if it's three phase or whatever.
You, you guys have, um, a designated outlet to use it?
Whatever.
Okay, that, that'll make, you guys work on that end of it?
We'll supply it if we get the pump.
Right, you guys work on the designated outlet, I will work with Jason and Scott, and we will come up with an electric pump for you. Okay?
The one is, we'll go to, we'll walk it out.
That's the first guy out there.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
And we'll work on it today?
Hmm?
It's, it's. Top of the decker.
Mid-country.
I'll work on it today.
I think I even got.
You're trying mid-country.
So, like the other day when I got, I was in Mexico, we, I was waiting for National Guard to show up.
Yeah.
And I had a patrol team give me a work order two months ago, for exploratory. Machine was sitting in the shed, it'll be higher than somebody twenty-five miles an hour, oh, you know, twenty-five miles away, which, they're competent, that's not the question.
Yeah, yeah. But, okay, basically, if we're doing work related to this tile, it's a drainage district expense, which will be spread over everybody in the watershed.
Yeah, just like the river.
Yeah, yeah. If it's cleaning between culverts or something, um, to me, that's a city maintenance issue.
After the city tile from there on is, is the city problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, which was, the city, we went through that a few years ago, we've been cleaning the top off every one, and.
Yep.
You wanna make sure everything worked, that's, you know, and the city don't have no problem with it, I don't, can't know it, I know why, Mayor.
No, no, I under, yeah, that's good.
So, but who's gonna use exploratory to find out what's in that?
Well, when we're looking at tile, I mean, I guess, if you're available.
Well, I mean, I have the work order, I mean, I.
Yeah.
If you wanna get somebody else.
Well, no, 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 if that, I mean, um, you're familiar with it, I mean, you've just been there.
Sixty-one years, give or less, sixty-three years, four years. We can't know.
Yeah, we understand.
Do you understand things about it that you guys don't?
Oh, absolutely.
Or your tile size and stuff.
And the language that you have with is not accurate.
The what?
The.
Oh, probably not.
No, it's not.
'Cause this, yeah. This was drawn in nineteen fifteen, a hundred and one years ago. Yeah. Yeah. I tell people.
There's more to it than what.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So Rick, what you're saying then, I think, is, we're gonna need to look at outlet, that's excellent, and you're, but you're okay with that on the rear part, I mean, we need to do that. So if you do something, whether you're.
Yes.
You can get your numbers back with the options on tile replacement or running it or whatever.
Yep, yep, yep.
And then we look at it again, and see where, uh, see which one looks the best to you.
And we'll try to keep pumping as much as we can, see if we can get the soil dried down from above and rain, you know. Well, even if it rains, if we get it pulled down somewhere, we've got a place to go.
Exactly.
If we don't do that, we're gonna be sitting underwater again.
Yes, exactly.
We don't wanna backpedal, we wanna keep moving forward.
Take some roots out, so we can use the city's natural, I don't care, do we take those roots out of that spot?
Yes, I, I, however we can most efficiently do that.
Well, the water table is just above the tile, and we can pump a little bit, and kind of hold on the top of the tile, we need, there's an intake there anyway. Why couldn't we put a rise around through surface area?
Sure, sure. And, and if that'll give you access to get roots out?
Well, it's.
Absolutely.
The roots, we know they're there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gotta help.
Yeah.
And if that cleans the tile out, and it goes down the rest of it, then we're not gonna matter.
Fabulous, yeah.
You know, we can't just spend five hundred dollars and maybe fix it.
Yeah, I'm all for it, we can do it.
You know, at least it'll dry down.
I do have one, but I still think, you can pull the trees out, twenty years now, people are gonna put trees back over it, they're gonna put stuff back in it.
But the tile's been a hundred and twenty years, and we've.
Well, that's, yeah, but.
Well, I think what you get your numbers, you'll have a better idea, you're gonna have the cost estimate.
Yes, yes. And what we find with these, and you've seen it too, where it just gradually gets worse and worse, it might take thirty years, yeah. And then all of a sudden, it starts blocking more, and then it accelerates, and you, yeah, got a major problem.
But I think that's where we're at, I think you described it to a P, at that, so we'll get started on it and follow that.
Yep, I wanna coordinate with Alan as far as those roots.
You work with him on that.
Yep.
And he gets the numbers back, just to have another meeting to go over.
Yes.
See what everybody's thoughts are.
There you go.
There's production for rain tomorrow, there's a fifty percent, and then on Saturday, there's a thirty percent chance of snow.
Thanks a lot.
We know all the looking at snow over the rain.
I just missed from the meeting.
All right. But I wanna, I wanna thank everybody for helping us with this, at least looking into it and stuff, or thank Melody, Trace, Dumps for looking into that, I really appreciate it, guys, thank you very much.
It feels good when you can help some, I mean, that.
Well, it's gonna help, we gotta open up a little bit of dump, dump what it was.
Yep, oh, yeah.
We don't have to break back in, we have ponds ready.
So Al, how quick would it work to do the spot you're talking about?
Well, in the next few days or something, you know.
Just let's coordinate.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've got a castle, we're giving this one up as well.
Yeah, yep, okay.
So.
And then Rick, get his numbers on different options, and then get back.
Maybe back down tomorrow, are you gonna be around somewhere at all?
Whenever you're gonna be here, I'll be here.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we know.
Yes, yep.
Okay, hey, what are you talking about, I got two-twenty submersible, so we get some push behind it?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two-twenty submersible is what we're looking for, so it's a pretty good sized pump. You probably, if you, if we get the money, Mount Sinai would be a good place for it to go.
Do you have access to three-phase power?
If we need it.
Whatever you want, whatever you want. Submersible.
I've just been told forever those run so much more efficiently, the three-phase, yeah, so it doesn't use.
Right, three-phase, you have two-twenty, you'll take on both sides, you take the electricity, a single-phase, you pull them off all one way, and it gets hot.
Cold side gets hot.
Yeah.
Both my shots got three-phase.
Oh, oh, okay. That makes sense, some of the big stuff you have.
All right, Rick, do you have anything else for us today?
Um.
We're getting really late.
Some.
Paul's gonna be off the chime.
He's already chomped.
I knew you, I just told.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds. We're finding that some of our difference on one-twenty-five with pretext is, there's like twenty-seven pipe laying out there.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
I drove over there and I saw a lot of pipe.
We've got an inventory on that, and that's what I have to get through, uh, to, to meet with pretext.
Something, sort of there.
Yeah, some of them were patched, but they, they brought more out because they were already past that spot by the time they got it patched, that kind of thing, so.
All right.
I'll know more in a couple of days.
Should I let it go out of green?
Yeah, mostly go out of green, but.
Come on.
If I get to seven forty-five.
Yeah. This one here, it's a big thing. Yeah. I've never really been traveled before. So. That's scary, you didn't have a description.
Put those in our files.
Those are big ones.
City couldn't see them from the road.
Okay.
And you can look over there, right?
I have the work order right there. On it?
Got a girl.
You got that one?
Rick, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
I went out and looked at a, uh, suck in the dirt ditch bank. I believe it's through the ten millimeter, along through the bank, who's responsible is the drainage district, city or department?
Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we.
'Cause it's, it repairs, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. I mean, you put, yeah, put a half a pickup in.
Oh.
Put the big hoods.
Okay.
Six, eight foot deep.
So it must be something, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe.
Should we do it all?
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
We just.
Oh.
It's really shocking, do a shot like that, it would suck it, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Was it at all?
Really?
Get it now.
So I didn't know who's. We take a break again?
It's true. It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay. So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay. So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together. Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's really shocking, a sound like that would suck up, but it is taking a lot of surface water through there.
Well, it's going to, get it now.
So, I didn't know whose, we take our break again?
It's true.
And then we went into the drainage district. Typically, the drainage district.
Well, we hope.
Because it's, it repairs the ditch, I mean, it ta, it stops damage to the ditch.
Yeah. Put a half a pickup in, put the dig holes, six feet deep.
Okay.
So, it'd be sucking, probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Probably the, where the tile and the pipe come together.
Well, it's not a tile, it's just a pipe going through the ditch.
Okay.
Go out of green.
Yeah. I'd have to put that on the list, that's one to top.
Very good.
That was very good.
Very good.
That's some good, that's some good things in there.
Yeah, we'd never get that right off.
Oh.
I'd like to help.
Usually, the ones will say, oh, you want to eat that?
All right, that gets us down to 24.
I think, I think we go ahead.
We're there.
All right. I'll go through that quickly. Uh, Monday evening, um, I was at City Hall IV, 6:30 for business, uh, this morning. The Alix C in the morning, also. Uh, Renwick evening, I was up to, uh, Tuesday evening, I was up to Renwick, six to, six to seven. And then I was down at the morning for county day on the ninth, ISAC on the 10th and the 11th. I'm not going to make a conversation on that.
What?
Yeah, I had Alix C morning, one and two. We took a little tour of the place before we even went, it was kind of impressive, I thought. Uh, and then ISAC, day at the Capitol. And I guess that was all I had.
Uh, well, Tuesday, I was on my way up here when you called me. I'd just parked my truck and got to the overpass and, oh, you don't need to come, so I turned around, went back to work.
Yeah, I know.
That's all right.
Sorry about that.
Then I, Wednesday, I was at Dallas County Day in Des Moines, and Thursday and Friday, um, for the ISAC school. And then Saturday, I went up to the, wasn't a requirement, but I went up to the Food for the Heartland and was part of the maze of people up there putting meals together. I was pretty impressed to see all of the people doing that.
Forty-nine thousand.
Yeah, they did, it was huge.
I heard Humble's, uh, second largest county.
Yeah. Behind Des Moines, so, that's pretty cool. There's lots of people.
Probably need to write these down, pay you, last Tuesday, after Rotary, I took the, Rotary's got two, the law enforcement center, was really impressed. I think we did some good PR there. And you guys, giving it in fortune, folks. Down to the capital.
After last week, we knew you were coming.
We give you the floor. Yeah, the day at the Capitol, we, uh, heard some legislative boards, and basically, they told us nothing's going to really happen in legislature, they gave the school aid for you, decided. That takes 90% or 75% of the money, so they're getting to hack that out. It's probably going to end up somewhere between 2% and 4%, if I guessed, it's 2.45. We'll see what happens. We really had a lot of discussion about this coupling law, you know, the, where your deductibility, the feds can do it, the state change the law and so forth. And they think they'll get that corrected before the, this year. If they want to put it in effect, be all right, do it a year later, but people that went out and bought machinery and so forth and then find out they can't deduct it, that's kind of bad news.
Yeah.
I think they're going to get that changed. That was pretty much, we talked to some of our legislators.
You think they'll be able to do it?
They, they said they thought they'd get that.
They extended the tax by 130 days, so I'm just hoping they'll have it done for 130 days.
When you heard Branch said again, talk about the water quality on the SAVE program down to Wallace Running, and pretty much what I reported before, whether that's going to fly or not, I don't know. It's a good program, I think, I'm in favor of it myself. Some people are opposed to it because they're throwing money at something, they don't know what they're going to do with the money. By the time that money gets there, they're going to have some good plans, working with the Secretary of Agriculture and so forth, but anyway, it's better than nothing, I think. We'll see what happens. About half the school superintendents think it's great, half of them think it's terrible.
Does that have to be voted on by the public?
No.
No.
It does not. And then we went into the ISAC meetings, we had some very good meetings this year. Paul Pete, Secretary of State, and Christie Johnson talked about the program they have for the abused, protect the abused, where they hide their identity and give them different license plates, all kinds of things. I didn't realize there was such a problem. But, there are programs to protect these people that get abused, and their contact will recall Secretary of State, they'll get you set up for that. That was a very good session.